As a follow-up from Jackie's comments, and we'd just like to recognize publicly, and I would like to say a few words here, our two outgoing board members. First here, we'd like to recognize Mrs. Pam Murray for your service and your time. And basically, it says on here with our gratitude for her time, talent, and support of our students, parents, and staff, we appreciate your standard of excellence and your contribution to the future of our district, Jefferson City Public Schools, Board of Education. So, anyway, thank you.
If you want to say now, and then I'll present Michael, that's however you guys want to do that. Go right ahead. The floor is yours.
Well, I just wanted to thank everyone, and it's, as Jackie said, it's a humbling experience to have the confidence of the public to be voted into office, and it's truly, truly been a wonderful honor to represent this community, and I appreciate all the help from everyone along the way, and thank you all very much, and good luck to those who will be coming up here shortly.
All right. Thank you, Pam. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Michael Cootie, with our gratitude for your time, talent, and support, we appreciate your standard of excellence and your contribution to the future of our district, Jefferson City Public Schools, Board of Education. So, thank you.
I know when I first decided to even think about running for a school board, my wife gave me a funny look, being a retired principal. One of the reasons, and the foremost reasons, why I ran for school board was for the silent majority, our kids at risk, without a silent voice, have no voice, and I believed that we needed to provide an opportunity for them. Even though I may be gone, I'm confident because of my heckling over the last three years, talking about being inclusive, of our board, of our staff, that we are reflective of the population which we serve. At times, folks have mentioned that and have spoken that, and I think that's important, that we are reflective of the population in which we serve. Our kids look up to their role models, they look up to their teachers, they look up to their administrators, and I'm glad I had an opportunity to be here to be a role model for our community, and also, the community elected me to represent them here for Jefferson City, and I thank you.
I don't think so. I just, on behalf of the Board from Island, Superintendent, it's, you have different dynamics from boards. It's my 10th year as superintendent, and every year's been different. So, Pam and Michael, I thank you guys for your service, and appreciate your time and effort. So, thank you. Okay. Next here, I believe we have the recognize our difference makers. So, we have started recognizing folks that make a difference. We are all stronger together, and we all have a different role, whether as a community patron, whether as a staff member, whether as a student, in different roles, different capacities. But we all are tied together, and so we've started recognizing difference makers, those folks that have made a difference. They get nominated, they go through a process. As we raise the bar, we have pictures where we are stronger together, and we firmly believe that. So, with that being said, I believe the first one, Principal Ben Meldrum, you're going to introduce and recognize under our learning pillar, and Ben, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I would like to call up Ms. Michelle Gregg. Michelle is a special ed teacher at Simonson Ninth Grade Center, and she was nominated by a parent of one of our students via an email, and I'm just going to share a brief excerpt from that email. "Miss Gregg recently sent me an email regarding the progress of my son, the progress my son is making in her class. It was such a joy to read as a mother in a prayer answered, to have been given so much positive in all of the negative that is going on in mine and my son's life the last five months. It literally brought me to tears, happy tears, couldn't have come at a better time." So, Michelle has been at Simonson for about five years now, and was at the high school. She's served in many different roles. She's currently our special ed team leader, department chair, and she's done a wonderful job. She's a great team leader, she's a great teammate to her team, and does a great job of communicating with our parents. So, Michelle, thank you for being a difference maker.
Okay. Our next difference maker underneath our partnership, Principal Sharon Longan from Nichols. Can you come forward, please?
Thank you very much. I'm honored this evening to be able to recognize a group of people, actually, under the pillar of partnership. It's very fitting that I'm recognizing a student along with a couple of teachers, because it really is a partnership when we talk about the learning process. So, Caleb Tenistra, would you come up, Caleb? Caleb is one of our students in our Mechatronics program. He's in the second year of the program, and he's kind of the fruition, and he's who I've actually nominated. I know this is more for faculty, but again, you'll see why Caleb is my nominee for this award. Caleb was given the task, or I should say, challenge, of creating a hand or arm device that would help an elderly stroke patient. In our Mechatronics program, that's what they do. Mr. Jaeger, who will be up in a minute, talks to folks about, "What's your problem? What is something we can fix? What is something we can do?" And then he turns that over to students, and voila, they go to work. And so Caleb was given the task, the challenge of creating this device. He used our 3D printer in order to come up with a final finished product that took several trials, right, to get that, and then to actually go to the elderly patient's nursing home and fit her with that device to help straighten out her arm and her hand. Teachers, Matt Jaeger, if you'll come up, remember, Mechatronics teacher, and Linda Heckman, who is our integrated math instructor, were also integral in this partnership that came to fruition with this device. Linda's mother happened to be the stroke patient I'm speaking of that needed this assistance. So, through the help of Mr. Jaeger and then Caleb, she was actually fitted with that device, and you may have seen on the front page of the paper how that finally came to fruition. So, so exciting to be able to connect our curriculum with real, live, real-world problems that truly did make a difference. It was just really fulfilling to see how this partnership came together. But the story doesn't end there. With the press that NCC has received through that newspaper article, through KOMU8 doing an article on that, we have gotten, Mr. Jaeger has gotten, a lot of different phone calls and requests of, "Maybe you can help with this, maybe you can help with that." And of course, we do have to vet all of that to make sure it matches our curriculum and our time, but there are some partnerships that are on the horizon, possibly something with Capital Region, with some other folks that have reached out to Caleb that need some assistance as well. So, that's really exciting to see that Caleb's efforts that initially touched one individual, there's that little ripple in the pool where he's probably going to be one of those guys that we look back and say, "He's a J grad," right? That's what we're excited about seeing. So, Caleb is also the president of our local Skills USA chapter. He's participated in a lot of community service activities, such as Operation Bugaboy, volunteering at local elementary schools. He's been tutoring since the sixth grade, helping students who struggle with math. He's the real deal when it comes to making a difference in our school. We're so proud of him and for the partnership that's been fostered with these folks, not only his learning, but the learning of others. And then on a final note, over the weekend, we've had our Skills USA competition, and Caleb is headed to Nationals, national competition in June, in the Mechatronics program, along with seven other Nichols Career Center students. So, five are Mechatronics students, one culinary for the first time ever, a national competition, one graphic communication, and one heating and air. So, we're proud of all of our school. But Caleb, thank you for making the call.
Okay. Thank you, Pam. Thank you. Thank you, Pam.
I need to call him. Help me. Help you, Jerry McGonigal.
Okay. And we have one more underneath our stewardship. We'll talk about our pillars. We have the learning, here in our, what we're trying to build with the learning, stewardship, and partnership, and our stewardship pillar, our maintenance crew. So, John Moon, Bob Weber, if you guys would come recognize those folks.
Good evening. I thank you all for allowing us. It's my honor to come and be able to present the stewardship difference maker for this month as the maintenance department. I continue to be proud and impressed of these guys. Some of them are a little shy and weren't able to make it here tonight, but with the dedication of our maintenance staff, they always answer the call to assist with facilities issues, no matter what time of day it is. Actually, a couple of them are out right now working on a garbage disposal, so that we have garbage disposal at a school for tomorrow. So, they would be here, but they're busy with that. So, you know, no matter what time of the day or night, weekends, holidays, they often give it their time with their families to ensure the facilities are ready each day, and they're safe for the staff and students to be able to come in. And I'm particularly impressed with their dedication to snow removal. Every year, it seems like, you know, snow, we get a fair amount every year, and, you know, we're having to come in oftentimes on weekends or evenings, or early in the morning to make sure that school's ready for the next day. So, and often in less than optimal weather, we have about eight trucks, and each one of these guys, most of them have a truck, and they have a certain area assigned. It's their responsibility to go and clean. We have a couple of salt trucks that run after that, that kind of salt the parking lots and roadways for the district. And then we have a public sidewalk crew that goes around and addresses any of the public walks and makes sure that they're all safe for students, pedestrians. Their dedication and attention to detail in this effort, much to the disappointment of some staff and students, helps make sure that the school is ready to go for whenever we have inclement weather. We have about 18 schools and various other support facilities, and the process takes about three to four hours to complete. So, you know, we have to be ready by seven. So, you know, lock times, that's coming in at 3:00, 2:30, 3:00, 3:30 in the morning to make sure that that stuff's done. These guys have done a fabulous job. This is Jeb Rush, Kyle Perkins, Dave Vike, Tom Wilken, and Vrenell Ferguson, and a few others who couldn't make it here tonight. Specifically, I'd like to recognize John Spencer and Dennis Wolfe. They're the guys that do the salt truck, and a lot of times, if we're not going to have to push snow, those would be the two guys that come in, and they go over the whole district, and it really takes a lot of their time as well. So, we believe that this supports the pillar of stewardship, you know, just essentially, we're not having to contract this work out. We're able to perform in-house, and also, each one of these guys, I could go on for a while, but each one of these guys is always, if I give them a call at any time, they're always willing to come in, help out with anything that needs to be done, not only snow removal, but, you know, if we've got HVAC issues or something of that nature, they've always responded. So, for this reason, among others, I believe the entire maintenance department are difference makers for the Jefferson City Public Schools.
I might add that somebody's calling these folks in, I number one, echo everything John said, but somebody is the quarterback, so to speak, getting them in and out checking roads, and that person is John Moon. It's in at 3:00 in Super Bowl Sunday, or Monday, I guess, and New Year's Day we work this year, so, but the whole department as well as John Moon are difference makers.
Thanks.
It has been a nice year. So, I left Columbia yesterday, get the golf tournament, I had like three to come back and watch the Masters. They called me like two hours later, and they're like, "Hey, where's your girl?" I'm like, "What the heck are you talking about?" It's not looking like, I mean, it was kind of right up there.
We didn't get that.
I know. It was going by the way.
Thanks for walking us through that, Larry. Always a good opportunity to recognize a lot of good difference makers around Jefferson City Public Schools. Got a lot of folks like that on staff. Next item of business, I would look for approval of the consent agenda as it's presented to you.
So, move.
Thank you, Michael.
Second.
Second.
As an agenda item, folks will have an opportunity to come address the board on those scenarios. So that's just kind of an update on that. Presented last week, excuse me, with Amy at the Massa and Mosprah Conference about the J plus C. A year ago, our community supported that and just the process that we went through. Kudos to Amy and that she did a great job on talking about how we got everybody to roll in the same direction. And the community presentations, we had 107 of those. And just trying to make sure we get, we got the word out that, hey, this is important and we want to folks to have an opportunity to ask any questions that they might have. Had a coffee with Larry on April 6th, I guess it was last Friday. The next one is May 4th. That's the first Friday of each month, 7 o'clock at the Miller Center. We want to invite folks to come to that. And we usually have some certain topics that we touch on and then we always have plenty of Q and A time with that. Had here, as far as the diversity update here earlier, Eugene brought some good elements there and looking at and what that means. We've kind of narrowed our diversity plans from, we have a role as a school district with regards to how we can be stronger together when differences exist, whether that is of skin color, whether that is of values, whether that is preferences on whatever it is, but recognizing racism does happen. And so what are we doing about that? So we've narrowed down when we've asked for community input. Eugene referenced the different town halls that we had. We've had discussions in here. We've asked our staff. We've asked our students, our middle school and our high school students. Kind of narrowed down to three things. One is just our hiring practices. Okay, Michael referenced it earlier. We would like our staff to reflect our student population. We are very similar to the state, across the state. It is challenging. And so kudos to Shelby Scarborough, Director of HR, on our hiring practices, tightening those processes and trying to be proactive with that. So we're excited about that moving forward. Our staff training. So we've had Dr. Simmons, who's the Chief Equity Officer in Northwest Missouri State. She came, she was at Mizzou when I went through my doctor program, she was there. And she came and presented not only to just our administrators, but some other community members. And how we do, we keep saying we're stronger together, that it is a community-wide effort and initiative moving forward. So we had a training on the 3rd, excuse me, the 7th of March. We have the next one scheduled for the 6th of June and then the third one scheduled for the 3rd of August. So those are important elements, again, not just for our staff, but our other community organizations as we work together, that it is a team approach moving forward. We've talked about it's not a microwave approach. It's not, hey, we're going to have it solved by, by the 20th of April. It's ongoing. The crock pot approach, it's going to take time as we work together with that. The third part, the multicultural advisory committee. That's something that had been in place years ago. It went away for whatever reason. And trying to have that, a multicultural advisory committee with folks to look at, with the goal, there was five goals from the previous committee, but just seeing what is the, what's the plan of that versus just having a committee to check a box, but what does that look like? I know the city council has a committee with regards to as they look at diversity and what does that look like for us? So reinstating that, taking a step back and really determine what do we really want? What is the crock pot approach for that as we work all those things? There's a lot of different other parts. Those are kind of the three pillars from that that kind of came through from community input, staff input, discussions we've had, here's a board, as we work through that process. So that is an important part of that. The last thing, just want to touch on our health screenings, a partnership with Capital Region Medical Center, the week of the 19th of March, I believe, as far as with health screenings for our staff, was at Dix Road. And that was something, we appreciate their partnership as we want to promote wellness and a healthy lifestyle, as we talk about with our kids, but for our staff. And that was, that was a real good thing. A lot of folks there at times, but that was, that was a real good thing. So a lot of different parts there, a lot of things going on, but that at this time is that's what I've got. So if you guys have any questions or comments on any of that. Okay, all I've got.
Thank you, Harry. Good update. Mr. Schindorf.
All right, good evening. I want to take a few minutes and I want to share with you a framework that we've been creating. So each month in my board report, I always start out my department report with the question of what are we doing to raise student reading, student achievement? And I mentioned the pieces that we're working on. What I'm showing you tonight is a framework that has been developed. We, as Dr. Lithgow said a few minutes ago, we do have a literacy cadre that's made up of teachers and principals and coordinators. And, and we use this cadre as our sounding board and feedback form so that we can ensure that we're providing the services and meeting the needs out at the, at the building level. And this is a framework that the cadre has begun working on and we're doing this because it's one thing for us to continue to say that 100% of our kids should be reading on grade level and to be out talking that and saying that, but we need to go more than just saying it. And we need to establish it as it is, it's reality. And one of the ways that you do that is you establish the things like this frameworks or documents that are shared and consistent across the district. And so this framework is going to become a consistent piece across this district and it's, it's still in the development stages, but is very close to what we're going to do. What you don't see, because in terms of literacy across this district, K-12, there is a lot of stuff that is taking place. This is just a framework and the development piece happens below this framework and that is fleshing out all of those components, those six components that you see there. But I just want to real quick touch on those six pieces, just to be clear, in our, in our work, what it is that's happening to help address those things. So the engagement rigor and relevance and rigor on the right-hand side, top there. You may know that rigor and relevance is our curriculum framework. We use that framework to design our curriculum, K-12. And we have a system in place now that when we revise curriculum, we do that as a K-12 process so we can ensure articulation. The expand literacy expertise, this is an important piece for us because we believe that we need to make sure that we are providing the support that's needed. We do this in many ways. We do it through teacher collaboration. We do it through job embedded. We do it through our motto classrooms, through our coaching cycles. So we have a lot of pieces that are fleshed out behind that that you don't see, but there's a lot of work happening for us to expand that literacy expertise. The using data to make decisions, that is a, an important piece for us because we believe that if we're going to make good decisions and we're going to intervene and meet kids where they're at, if we're going to address the issues that Mr. Vogel was talking about, we have to make sure that we are providing the intervention models it takes as opposed to just providing instruction to all. We need to have practices that make, ensure that we are providing the practices and the instructional strategies that meet the needs of the kids and the diversity that's in our classroom. And we do that through the data teams process. So teachers get around the table, they're looking at the data, what kids can and can't do. They're coming up with the strategies to go back and address that the next day or the next week and to address the needs of the kids. So we believe it's one way that we're helping to address the needs. It's also a very significant piece to our initiative to ensure that we have quality lesson plans in place. The instructional leadership is an important piece for us because we believe that if our, the leadership in this district doesn't understand what good literacy, what good practices look like, we can't support it. And so we're, we use our professional development models, both district models and building models, to develop our instructional leadership to ensure that our leadership is aware of what the expectations are. Literacy across content, we believe this is a big part of our all-in approach. And just last week, we sent one of the first communication pieces out to all staff members about our all-in approach of using close reading. We, I've talked to you about that before. But although it's already being used in many of our buildings, the expectation come August is that we're going to have all of our staff, regardless of the content, regardless of your class, regardless of your grade level, we're going to provide literacy support structures to our kids. Because we believe that if regards, even if you're in a science class or a social studies class or a PE class, there are things we can do to help support literacy in those classes. And so that initiative has been communicated and we're ramping up for that. And then resources, we believe the resources are not just money. It's not just our district, our school and our community parents, but it is, it's more than just money. It is our community. So we need to start looking at ways that we can involve our community in the work that we're doing. How can we involve our parents? How can we communicate better? How can we get them involved? How can we provide them the, the services they need to help us with our initiative? And so all of those pieces together, we believe is going to help with our student achievement. Again, it is a framework and there is a lot of, a lot of work that happens behind those pieces that we'll be bringing to you. This is going to take the form of a placemat that's going to become very prominent across this district. So you're going to see this a lot in the near future. So just wanted to share our framework with you and answer any questions you might have. Okay? Look for the framework. It's come to a school near you.
Thank you, Brian.
Anything to add?
No, I just, great job on that. And I think it's just a reminder for all of us, and it will take all of us, when I say us, it, I mean, it truly is a community, a team effort, that reading is a fundamental element of everything. It's tied, we talk about student behavior is one of our priorities. We think it's a, contributes. I've shared, I think in here, that when we've, I've gone to middle schools and asked students who are in school suspension, what percent of those kids are below grade reading level?
Sense.
All of them. I mean, it's just, just a common. So we're all tied together and so we're just excited about, so thank you guys for your work on that.
Thanks, Frank. Ms. Brenda Hatfield, school safety survey update.
Joe doesn't let me touch technology. Thank you so much for letting me come. I want to talk to you a little bit about the surveys that we did. We did two surveys. We did a faculty and staff survey and a family parent survey. We ran those simultaneously in the month of March. From the family perspective, more than 1,900 students were represented by the survey responses, which is about a 22% response rate from our families. So we felt that was pretty good, especially given that one of the weeks was spring break. More than 50% of the respondents actually had more than one child in the district. And so that was also, we felt that was very positive as well. We shared the one survey with our faculty and staff. The response rate for certified staff, I think, is pretty significant. Of all of our certified staff, 54% of them completed our safety survey, which I thought was phenomenal. I was very excited about that. 21% of our non-certified staff participated in the survey. So I want to talk to you first about the faculty and staff results. If you'll look from the survey respondents, 80% who filled out that survey were certified staff and 20% were non-certified staff. 50% of them have been with us more than six years. Obviously, that means 50% of us, of them have been with us for less than five years. Strengths, and I think this is pretty significant, 80%, because this is something that Frank really wanted to know the answer to, 80% of our staff report that they are very familiar or familiar with our emergency response plans. So we're very excited about that and we felt really positive about that number. 11 out of the 19 questions that we asked that were ranking questions were rated higher than 70%. So Frank and I arbitrarily decided that strengths were defined as anything above 70% of more of the respondents. And then anything below that 70% would be those areas that we would focus on first when one thinks about things to improve. So again, that's an arbitrary number, but we felt that that was a good significant number for us to start. In addition to the strength I just read, the other strength areas were that the school takes all threats and rumors of violence seriously. The school's faculty and staff feel personally responsible for what happens. I know how to communicate a general safety concern. Emergency response drills are performed regularly. The school building is free of hazards. I know how to communicate in case of an emergency. School rules and expectations are clear and well-known. The school has adequate exterior safety lighting. The school maintains adequate control of entrances and exits. While this was significantly higher than 70%, the asterisk is there because almost all of the negatives there are the high school or Nichols', which is to be expected. And I don't think any of us would be shocked by that number, but I do want to make sure that we are clear that parents do not agree that the high school in Nichols' is good control over their entrances and exits. The school has adequate resources to help students in a case of an emergency or crisis. But that left us with some opportunities. So again, if 11 of the 19 were strengths, then we've got eight statements that ranked less than 69. Of those that ranked less than 69, five of them were in that 60 to 69 range. And then three were below 59%. And those three are what we believe are the top priorities that this district needs to focus on. Mental health resources for students, student behaviors, discipline and how that impacts safety as well as the building climate, bullying, both the prevention, discipline and the reporting of bullying. So again, this is what is from our staff's perspective. The school does have adequate resources to help students with mental resource, mental health concerns. That is the least positive response that we got. So I put these in order of least to most. The school's safety is not a big problem at this school. I worry very little about school's climate and safety. The consequences for violating school rules and expectations are applied consistently. My school has adequate programs in place to deal with bullying. Bullying is consistently reported. My school's faculty and staff enforce rules fairly and appropriately. And the school provides adequate training for what to do in an emergency. So those are the areas the staff told us they wanted us to focus on. We did have open-ended responses. So for open-ended responses, we actually gave our staff three questions that they were asked, as opposed to the community, they were asked one open-ended question. And of the three, I'm sorry, of the folks who filled out the survey, we had a good 200 and some people actually write open-ended comments. And some of them are book-like. I mean, these people were very passionate in the responses that they wanted to give us. One of them is actually a three-page response that has cited different things that I need to go look up and we need to do some more research on. So these people took it very seriously. A large percentage, when you look at this question, how could resources be enhanced? A large percentage of the comments were regarding mental health needs of students and concerns that we do not have adequate resources to meet the ever-increasing needs of these students. Additional comments were made about the number of counselors available to serve students as well as the tasks that we're asking counselors to accomplish. There were some suggestions to increase the number of counselors as well as to review their current job duties. Staff did express some concern regarding emergency training, the need for additional hands-on training. There is a desire for some additional safety items. That's everything from metal detectors to blankets in case of a tornado, because we have some schools where there's still glass near where the kids would be sheltering. So the blankets that you could put over them. Also supplies in case folks become trapped in case of an emergency in the schools. There were also concerns about the age of facilities. This was primarily secondary staff, but many of them would acknowledge in their comments that this should soon be taken care of, but they did say it was a current issue. A few comments were shared regarding the concern with the lack of options for alternative placements for students where disruptions are occurring to the learning environment. Others felt that we had options, but we were slow to pull the trigger on using those options. Staff shared additional resources that they felt would help JCPs and, and they felt that maybe some of that was with staffing and that we needed to have additional staffing. And that could be anything from social workers' behavior, psychologists, paras, therapy dogs, or counselors. And then there were a few concerns about class sizes and expectations. There's also a general comment regarding the need to provide consistent use of the services and programs we have. There was a feeling that maybe we aren't using everything that we've already been given. And then, of course, providing character-type learning as well as removing cell phones from the classroom. The next one, the next question we were asked is, we asked them was, do you have any suggestions to improve school's safety? The majority of comments from staff were related to additional security measures, again, metal detectors, additional training, more drills, additional controls on entrances, cameras that are monitored by law enforcement, not by the district, additional comments regarding support to students with mental health issues. Again, more requests for counselors, psychologists. There was an overwhelming sense that students are in need and that there's not resources within the community to meet those needs. Concerns were expressed regarding enforcement of school rules for a variety of behaviors as well as concerns about students disrespect for teachers or principals. There was a general consensus that we had adequate rules, but consequences were not always carried out in a similar fashion when issues occur. And some staff did express concerns regarding class size. And there was some suggestion that we needed to work on communication with staff in the community regarding school safety issues and what we need. And it was suggested that we increase law enforcement's presence at all schools. And some suggested that we need to encourage more families to be involved in our schools. And if we did that, we would have less school safety issues. Bullying was one of the, the big areas for us. And this is the one where I got the most passionate responses. Our staff provided more than 100 ideas, programs, and comments just about bullying. When you tried to narrow those down, and thank Brian and Frank spent part of their weekend trying to help me narrow all of this down, it came, it boils down to firm, consistent consequences for students who bully, team building with our teachers and students, and having additional trainings and resources for teachers and students. But we have not had time to fully vet all of those ideas. So please know that is just the very quick brush that we were able to do in this last week. Any questions about what the teachers told me so far? Then I'm going to run on to families. Families, 21% response rate. 56% of the respondents represent elementary, 22% represent middle, and 22% represent high school. The strengths that we have, these I think are good numbers for us. 79% of the respondents, these are families, said my student feels safe at school. 73% of the respondents said I believe my student is safe at school, it's safe at school. Again, we use that 70% marker. 11 of the 20 questions that we asked families were rated higher than 70%. So I felt really good about that as well. The strengths that we had, I feel welcome when I visit school. The school building is well-maintained and a pleasant place to learn. A good working arrangement exists between local law enforcement and the school. School is free of hazards. The school rules and expectations are clear and well-known to students. SROs are respected and liked by the students they serve. SROs have a good working relationship with our principals and teachers. The school has programs in place to involve parents and our community is involved with the school. So we felt very positive about those strengths and I think we have a lot to be proud of there. But we do have some opportunities, as I said previously. Again, those are ranking less than 69%. Of the nine, five of them ranked between 60 and 69, and four were ranking below 59%. So those four that ranked below 59% were bullying, prevention, discipline, and recording of, mental health resources for students, drugs. But please note, this is only a concern at the high school level with a little bit at the middle school level. There's very few families who were in the elementary who, who put drugs as a concern for us. And then the fourth one was, of course, student behaviors. So bullying is not a problem at my school. My school has adequate programs to prevent bullying. So those are both of our bullying questions. Those did not rank as high as 70%. The school has adequate resources to help students with mental health concerns. Drugs are not a problem at my school. School disturbances are infrequent. Consequences for violating school rules are applied consistently. School's faculty and staff enforce rules fairly and appropriately. And the school has adequate resources to help students in an emergency or crisis. And the school administrator enforces rules fairly and appropriately. Those are the areas that we think we would need to focus on when you look at these particular survey results. We did have open-ended responses. There were more than 440 open-ended responses that we received. And thank you again, Brian and Frank, for spending part of your weekend helping me go back through those because it was a ton of stuff to get through. Everyone was very passionate about their opinions and their philosophies. And, and so we're going to do everything we can to make sure that we can represent those the best we can. A number of respondents wanted to see the district add additional SROs. Not only one at each elementary school, but additional at the secondary levels. There were also suggestions that we add veterans, armed security guards, somebody else to provide security within our buildings. And that received the most, when one would, if you would try to search for those particular key tags, 60 of the 440 said that's important to them. There were a number of concerns about school entrances. While some acknowledged the buildings are well-controlled during the school day, there were a number of concerns about after-school access as well as preschool access, before school access. So whether it's Y care or school activities, there were concerns that maybe folks could walk into our buildings after hours where they would not have been able to during earlier in the day. Additionally, there was a concern about side doors being propped open by deliveries or as custodians clean. And then we have some mobile classrooms. And so there were a number of concerns as we add mobile classrooms to the, to the current high school next year, how are we going to keep those kiddos safe? And how are we making sure that we're thinking about that? Parents shared concerns about student behaviors, discipline, and the need for alternative placement for disruptive students. This included concerns about how to effectively use out-of-school suspension, in-school suspension, buddy rooms, and all of the other programs we have in place. Many felt that allowing disruptive students to remain in the classroom is unfair to the other students in these classes who cannot learn when disruptive students are present. There was a call for smaller class sizes, enhanced support for teachers, and increased family involvement. There were also, again, concerns about mental health treatments available to students at every grade level. It was suggested that the district needed to provide additional health, mental health training for their staff as well as hire our own school therapists to treat students with mental health concerns. Bullying is reported as a problem by families. There were concerns about our current prevention programs being ineffective, punishments not being consistent within and between buildings. What is interesting, because a lot of people stopped me when they found out I was doing the survey and said, oh, where are we at on guns? You know, and they had their own opinion. And they yelled at me about both sides of it, and that was tons of fun. But when you search for arm, conceal, carry, guns, whatever, out of the 400, more than 440 responses, only 30 mentioned conceal and carry, arms, guns, whatever words you want to use to search for that. Of that, two-thirds, two-thirds of the respondents of that 30 were in favor and one-third were opposed to us doing that. What was interesting, and I told Larry, I did the teacher survey first and then I did the parent one. And I didn't report out because the teachers, only three of them said no guns and nobody else said anything. And so it was fascinating to me because I told it was the lack of information that actually caused me to miss that one on the teacher survey because they were, the only vocal was three saying, no, thank you, don't arm us. So I thought that was an interesting finding that I wanted to make sure that you guys saw. So similarity. Faculty and staff said mental health resources, student behaviors, discipline, and bullying. Top family, family priorities, and these are the order that they told us they wanted to mend. Bullying, mental health resources, drugs. Again, note that that's the high school only, so I pulled that one out, and student behaviors. So it looks like there is a clear message from both our families as well as our teachers on what our priorities should be. So next steps, here's where we are now. Bear in mind, the data is not completely cut, so please, we're working as hard and fast as we can. We are going to cut the data further by building. We're going to look at what a secondary looked like. We're going to cut it in many other different ways. So we will do continued analysis of the data to understand what's going on and to make sure that we can start the appropriate actions in appropriate buildings. We are reviewing the installation of an integrated alert system which utilizes technologies that our schools already have. We are planning live law enforcement-led intruder training that is being scheduled. And then we are currently reviewing staff supports for behaviors. Questions? I'll try.
Okay. No, no questions. I support what you're saying, especially in the two areas. And I see it on a more regular basis when you talk about mental health. And I've talked about in the past, when we have guidelines or rules, we have unintended consequences when we put things in place. We have a tendency, when a kid acts out in school, we say you must come back with a mental health assessment before you can get back into school. Because of that, we have very little resources available for kids to get those assessments done. At the most, it will take between 30 and 60 days to even set up an appointment. If you get that appointment and you have the assessment, it will take up to 45 days to get the written report. So you're saying a kid cannot come back to school until they are assessed. So we are looking at 30, 60, 90 days they're not in school.
Almost a whole semester.
Right. So that's a concern that I have because I see it on a daily basis. Another area that I agree with, when you talk about bullying, we do not see the bullie-ers. We see the kids that have been bullied and they start to act out as a result of the intimidation. And so they get to the point, they, the tension, the frustration, and they act out in school and they may say unintended, they, the, the things that they say get them in trouble or they threaten someone. Very seldom do we get the bullier because kids are pushed and then they stop. But then the kid that is being bullied, it kind of festers over time. And those are the kids that we actually see because they act out. And as a result, we're getting the, the end result, not the beginning of that activity. So that's another area, you know, when you're talking about the teachers, the custodians, the, the food service workers, when you see that activity going on, we need to stop it at the beginning, seeing kids pushing others or, or making fun of others, where you're stopping it on the front end so we don't get it on that back end like we're getting it today.
We got a number of very passionate parents who had stories that are in the long set of open-ended discussions.
Okay. But I support those areas because that's what we see on an ongoing basis.
Other questions for me? It's been fun. More data to come.
Brenda, I appreciate you doing that. When there was some, you know, nationwide school shootings and different things, you know, we talked about, you know, what are we doing? Well, what can we do to get better? And so let's ask our folks. So we weren't, we gave the safety committee, I touched on my report there on the 14th of March, told them we were asking folks, hey, what are we doing? Asking our teachers, asking our parents. So there's a lot of information, you know, even when the word survey came up, your guys' eyes perked up like, ooh, is there, you know, is there? there juicy stuff? I mean, these are things that we recognize are real. We know it's not perfect. We're willing to, let's get better. Let's have discussions. And I appreciate the time going through that. I appreciate our staff, our parents that took the time, that they felt that it was valued, that we weren't just doing it, just ask folks. And so I appreciate the time and efforts in collecting all the stuff and presenting that there, Brendan.
Good report. Thank you. Good information to consider going forward. So in our new business, we've got the election results that you should have at your seats. You see that have been certified by the clerks of Callaway and Colton Counting. Take a brief second to prove those. And we reached a point where we need to reorganize, and so at this point, look for a motion to adjourn Senadilla.
No. Need to approve.
Gonna approve, Steve.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Yes. Sorry, Cam and then Michael.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposing, nay. Okay. Now I'd like for a motion to approve Senadilla, adjourn Senadilla.
So moved.
Thank you, Lori.
Second.
Take the floor up. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned.
That's yours.
Reorganization.
Do I need to be in here when they read? I gotta take a phone call.
Next one.
I'd like to note that the varsity baseball team lost eleven to one.
What's the article?
I know.
They were saving the picture on the board today, right?
I'm not quite sure what happened. But it's been painful last three games. Fourteen to nothing, thirteen to three. Pain.
Yes, they give you the other one.
Oh, yes, there you go.
Oh, we need to go visit the construction site now.
Your name's perfect.
Thank you.
I'd just like to note that the varsity baseball team lost eleven to one.
What's the article?
I know.
They were saving the picture on the board today, right?
I'm not quite sure what happened. But it's been painful last three games. Fourteen to nothing, thirteen to three. Pain.
We went back to candy. What happened to healthy?
Rich needs nerds.
Fresh up the nerd.
Sure.
I love hard candy.
First one's free.
Not traded out?
I'm good. I just need my coffee.
Who likes those?
Those are hard to pass out.
You may not get it.
I love people who say, I know you're busy.
The peanut butter M&amp;M's that he stole from me. I'm going to buy them today. That's hard on me.
Yeah, right.
My stuff is so more important than your stuff, so please.
But they said.
Yeah.
But those words that says, somebody who's fighting with.
Larry's the temporary chairman.
Oh, no, yeah. Are we inviting them in?
Somebody to ask them to come on in?
They're in here while we do this.
Okay, I'll ask them to come on in.
Right.
I got a phone call at one thirty on Friday, and a lady rang me about that lawsuit. I mean, I was like.
You'll have to tell me who it was because it was around the time I got involved.
Same person, same person.
She called you, too?
Yep. Hi, Lindsay.
Welcome. Thank you so much for having me.
No, we kind of have.
They approved the election results, so.
Okay, I'll just start. I do solemnly affirm upon my honor that I will support the constitutions of the United States and of the state of Missouri, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of school director in and for the school district of the city of Jefferson, counties of Cole and Callaway, state of Missouri, to the best of my ability, according to law, so help me God.
Welcome.
Thank you. I do solemnly affirm upon my honor that I will support the constitutions of the United States and the state of Missouri, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of school director in and for the school district of the city of Jefferson, counties of Cole and Callaway, state of Missouri, to the best of my ability, according to law, so help me God.
Mr. Brenlos, if you'd like that seat here, just round right over here.
Okay, I'm your temporary president, and I'd like to take nominations for Board of Education President and Vice President.
I nominate Steve Bruce as President.
Second.
Okay. Any nominations? Any discussion? Okay. For President, all in favor, for Steve Bruce's President, President, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. Have that. Okay, and then I also have Vice President, right? Okay, so as your temporary president, I would like to take nominations for Vice President.
I nominate Rich Abashon.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, for Rich Abashon as Vice President, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. That's Eugene Adams, Steve Bruce, Rich Abashon. Thank you. Back to you. Just do your thing.
Well, I would look for nominations for Treasurer and Board Secretary.
I would like to nominate Lori Schwartz for Treasurer.
Second.
Thank you, Lori. Any discussion? All in favor is Lori for Treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. And Board Secretary, traditionally that's always been fulfilled by Stephen Field. So I would look for a nomination to that effect.
So moved.
Thank you, Scott. Lori, did I hear you? Second, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of Stephanie Saffanfield as Board Secretary, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Very good. Okay, everybody. Okay. They call the order of the new board. Stephanie, would you do a roll call, please?
Lindsay Roudin, here. Lori Schwartz, here. Rich Abashon?
Yes.
Steve Bruce?
Here.
Lori Massman, here.
Ken Inlow?
Here.
And Scott Hobus?
Here.
Thank you.
Very good. You'll reference your item five under New Business, your second page of your agenda. You do see we do have some business to take care of this evening, so. We've got item A. Dr. Lindtke, MSBA.
Yes, we are a member of the Missouri School Board Association through our policies. Lori Massman has in our delegate position, and Scott Hobus has our alternate. So that has been in the past, but we need to, need to take nominations for the one delegate position and one alternate position to the Missouri School Board Association.
Does anybody have any questions in regards to what you actually, what that entails or what that requires?
It's basically a liaison between, with our Missouri School Board Association. Lori, do you have anything to add as serving in that role tremendously?
I do not. I just remember getting kind of thrown under the bus last year, smacked in the face. So it's somebody else's turn to let that bus ride right over them. That's my thought.
Well, I'm asking for nominations. Everybody wants, I'm asking for nominations.
Let the room.
Do I hear nominations?
Somebody call me or something.
That's up to you.
I nominate Ken Inlow.
Great choice.
How's that bus feeling?
Yeah. So in the first and the second, any discussions on that? Ken, are you willing to serve in the role? I guess we'll ask.
I am. I might as well.
Jump right in.
Might as well get going.
Jump right in.
That's right.
I appreciate that, so no further discussion. All those in favor for Ken serving as the one delegate for the Missouri School Board Association, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That's as unanimous, but thank you.
I got a feeling something happened while I was going.
I tried, but I got shut down.
All right, I look forward to it.
We do have.
Thanks, Lindsay and Ken, I see how it works. There you go.
We do, Ken Inlow is our delegate. We do have one alternate. You've served in that role for the past year. Thank you, Scott. We do need one more taken nomination here for an alternate position to the Missouri School Board Association.
I would like to nominate Lindsay Roudin.
Second.
Why change the best?
I have a first and I have a second. Any discussion on that? Lindsay, are you willing?
I think I can do that.
Okay. Thank you very much, okay. Lindsay is the alternate position for the Missouri School, delegate position for the Missouri School Board Association. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, Lindsay, thank you. I will serve as the delegate alternate for that.
Thank you, Larry. I appreciate it, guys. Item B, it looks like we have some work in regards to signatures.
Actually, we don't need to do item B because we didn't change officers, so.
Unless you were aware of anything, we can move on.
We can move on from item B.
Right, okay, very good.
And unfortunately, we don't have information for item C. We thought it was a long shot that they, that NavHoltz would have all the information for us ready for tonight, but in case they did, we went ahead and put that on here. But what that means is I need you guys to get together for probably a special board meeting if we could. So do you want just Stephanie to send out some times? They, earliest they could do it was Friday, and they'd like to do it as soon as possible.
And that might, if I could interject here with a, two new members, bottom line, MSBA would say you meet when it works for your folks. I've had meetings at nine thirty, nine thirty PM with a lot of farmers, and I've had six thirty or seven o'clock meetings in the morning. So it's up to you guys, whatever works for your guys' schedules, whenever we need to have, which is rare, but it does happen.
It's probably going to be more with the construction project going on.
Absolutely, right.
But it shouldn't be a long meeting, it's just something we need to get approved.
Or over lunch as well.
Can we do it on Friday? Is this Friday?
Friday morning. They say they're going to have it to me by Thursday for us to review. I can get it to you Thursday, and if we could do it early Friday morning, that would be great.
Friday is the fifteenth, seven.
This is a big package. This is concrete, steel, quite a bit of stuff in this package.
I could do it anytime on Friday. You'd have to be early morning for me.
Yeah, anytime.
Three AM works best for me.
That's early, Lori.
I was going to say four. It's getting earlier and earlier every day.
Seven AM.
Seven AM.
Friday, seven AM here.
Okay.
That's the central standard time.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Jason. Okay.
Here, right here.
Correct, yes, okay, thank you. Math purchase, Dr. Shindore.
So you have in front of you the, what I believe to be the final purchase from our math resource, and this is for the algebra two and geometry purchase for the classroom teachers and student books. It includes the hardback and the digital copies, and so you have in front of you a quote for one hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-four cents, and so I would ask that you, respectfully ask that you would approve this last purchase.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Rich. Any discussion? Okay, now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you, sir. Nice diamond business. Mr. Weber.
Good evening. I think on page twenty-seven, according to my records, starts a couple of contracts. It's for summer projects, the first being tuck pointing at Lewis and Clark Middle School. Last year, we did Thomas Jefferson, and this year, we felt we needed to come over and do Lewis and Clark and be tuck pointing, caulking of exterior, and then waterproofing the buildings. So the low bid was T&amp;J's restoration from Jeff City or maybe Wardsville, an amount of one oh seven, seven hundred.
Mr. Bruce. Thank you, Lori. Second. Ken? There you go. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. You're good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The second contract is for a new intercom system at Cedar Hill Elementary. There's quite a bit of difference in the bids, if you look at the bid tab. The low bid, their system will integrate with all of our speakers and call buttons in the rooms and so forth, where the other company's system would not, so they have to replace all that and rewire and so forth. Plus, I know as Larry says, Pinto Cadillac, Pinto Chevy Cadillac, I think the high bidder was probably even above a Cadillac, maybe a Lamborghini. So anyway, we have tech electronics in pretty well all of our other schools as far as intercoms, and the systems perform very well. So I recommend in the low bidder of tech electronics for a new intercom system at Cedar Hill Elementary.
Mr. Bruce. Second. Thank you, Lori. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. You're good.
Thank you. All right, thank you. The second contract is for a new intercom system at Cedar Hill Elementary. There's quite a bit of difference in the bids, if you look at the bid tab. The low bid, their system will integrate with all of our speakers and call buttons in the rooms and so forth, where the other company's system would not, so they have to replace all that and rewire and so forth. Plus, I know as Larry says, Pinto Cadillac, Pinto Chevy Cadillac, I think the high bidder was probably even above a Cadillac, maybe a Lamborghini. So anyway, we have tech electronics in pretty well all of our other schools as far as intercoms, and the systems perform very well. So I recommend in the low bidder of tech electronics for a new intercom system at Cedar Hill Elementary.
Mr. Bruce. Second. Thank you, Lori. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Roudin.
Thank you.
Thanks for turning up the thermostat, too.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Frank, you've got a couple of items.